All right, I'd like to call to order this December 6th, 2022, regular Board of Ed meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Get your chair ready. Yes, I always make sure your chair is there. Okay, all right. So first thing, we have our student council report. And who was the name again?
Sarah.
Sarah.
Yep, Sarah. Was it able to make it? Colleen is here.
Colleen.
Hello, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
Sorry, I'm a little shorter than they anticipated. But good evening, everyone. I'm Colleen Soriano. I'm a senior and vice president of student council, and I'm happy to report the recent happenings in Somers High School in place of Sarah Vella, who can't make it to tonight. For student life, we had French week last month on November 8th to November 10th. We had the francophone art contest and a French screening of My Father's Guest. The National Honor Society Blood Drive was on November 20th, and this week is Inclusive Schools Week, and we had a cooking contest today held by world language teachers during community lunch. The Somers Drama Company held a production of Night of the Living Dead last weekend, and the Somers High School Winter Concert is on December 21st. Student Senate has begun to meet and break into committees addressing the issues they believe are most pressing to the high school experience. Such includes student voice in the mental health department, extracurricular activities, and the bathroom issues in the high school. Counseling, we have mock interviews were conducted for seniors to practice college interviews in a low-stakes environment, and College Night for juniors is on Thursday, December 8th. For student council, tomorrow, we have Veterans Lunch. Veterans around the area were invited to Somers High School for lunch, and their students will celebrate them and serve them with meals to thank them for their service. Mr. Somers is going to be held on Friday, 12th, for December 9th, on Friday, and Winter Spirit Week is going to be held the week before holiday break on December 19th to December 22. That's all for tonight, and thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda is public comment. Just a reminder for public comment, we have a maximum 30-minute period, limited to three minutes per speaker, and we ask that no district employee or student be commented upon or identified by name or situation. So this public comment is for agenda items only. Is there any public comment today related specifically to agenda items? Okay. Then we move on to student recognitions.
Great. So tonight, we have first time here, our new athletic director, Mr. Mark Haddam, is here tonight to speak on behalf of the athletic coaches, and he'll make a few announcements here tonight. And Mr. Haddam, just to kind of remind myself and the group of the acknowledgement here for many of our students that met the academic line there, so if you don't mind coming to the podium, that would be great. Thank you, sir. I think you have to move the mic up.
Is that a back joke? Good evening, everybody. I want to make sure Julia's not here. Oh, Julia's right there. Good evening. This past season, we had over 440 student athletes compete on a fall team. The accolades were plenty, from team to individual accomplishments. Tonight, I want to thank our Board of Education for the time to honor and celebrate a few of those accomplishments. First, I would like to recognize the nine fall teams that will receive recognition from NISFA, the New York State Athletic Association, Public High School Association, for earning the Team Scholar-Athlete Award. Those nine teams are football, boy soccer, girl soccer, girls tennis, field hockey, volleyball, boys cross-country, girls cross-country, and girls swim. To give you an idea what it takes to qualify for the NISFA Team Scholar-Athlete Award, over 75% or over of each team needs to have a 90 or higher average. So it's quite an award. So congratulations to those teams. And as you see behind me, we have some coaches and athletes. I'd like to take a little time to honor those coaches and athletes. I'd like to start with our girl soccer program. Soccer is called the beautiful game in many circles, and watching our girl soccer team compete this year, they certainly played as beautiful of a game as you would see on the high school level. I'd like to congratulate the girls on a fantastic 17-2 season, winning another league championship, and thank you to Coach Heg for her leadership. Thank you, ladies. The sport of volleyball is definitely on the rise here in Somers. We had a record number of kids try out at every level from varsity, JV, and modified this year. I'd like to recognize Coach Pittman for his tireless work throughout the calendar year for growing the game of volleyball here in Somers, and I'd like to thank his assistant coaches, his JV coach, and most importantly, the girls, for organizing such wonderful events, such as the Play for Pink game and the fundraiser for the Camaro, excuse me, for Camaro's Crusaders. Congrats on the first volleyball league championship coach in the past nine years. I'll get you that tomorrow.
I got it.
There you go. See how we function so well as an athletic team? I had the chance to watch Julia Wilkinson dive recently in the New York State Dive Finals up in Rochester, New York. If you watched Julia dive, you would be blown away by her physical performance, but me, I was even more blown away with how she prepared mentally for competition. Julia is a member of our student athletic council and has certainly earned the admiration of the staff and faculty at Somers High School for her strengths in both the classroom and in the pool. I would like to congratulate Julia Wilkinson for coming in ninth overall in New York State, the ninth-best diver in New York State a few weeks ago. Congratulations, Julia. The most excited I heard a member of our coaching staff all fall season is when I got a call from Coach Veg on a Saturday afternoon. I was in a parking lot, I was dropping my daughters off at a birthday party, and Coach called with such heartfelt excitement, letting me know that his girls qualified for the New York State Championship. Cross-country is a grueling sport, and hearing Coach speak, this was, I'm sure, Coach's emotions for being so proud of his girls for being out there since mid-August and accomplishing some wild goals, which I'm going to read. The team, excuse me, I'm sorry, the team won the league championship, they won a section championship, they won a Westchester County championship. Then the team moved on to finish third in New York State, Class B, and due to that finish, they were invited to the New York State Federation Meet, which matches up teams from public, private, and parochial schools, the best of the best all over New York State. It's a wonderful group of young ladies. Congratulations on such a great season. Hopefully, everybody starts to get a feel about the, just some of the wonderful kids and coaches we have in our athletic program. Christian Wissa came in 31st in New York State, Class B state champion, individual 31st. He was the 31st-best runner. Christian also ran a personal best during the New York State Championship this year. I asked Coach Lacco afterwards, I said, "Coach, what makes Christian such an accomplished Coach's answer was simple. Coach said, "Mark, he works as hard as anyone and listens to all the coaching tips and pointers we always give. Christian, your results this season were a direct reflection of your hard work and character, and we'd like to congratulate you on another great cross-country season." Come on up, Christian. And finally, we have a sport here in Somers that's called football. I don't know if anybody heard of it, but we had a pretty successful season this year. In my first year as A.D., being so close to a program, it was an amazing experience for me. I asked Coach DiMatteo to come with his captains. I think one of them can't make it, Luke Kennedy, unfortunately, so I just wanted to say a few words about our football team next. To Matt, Jake, and Nick, I want to say thank you and honor you on behalf of our administration and our board. Your performance on the field is exceptional. Jake, congrats on heading to the Naval Academy next year to continue playing and for widely being recognized as the most outstanding lineman in New York State. Matthew had an amazing season, finishing a regional championship and a New York State Championship with 10 touchdowns in the final two games. And Nick, your leadership abilities and ability to play on both sides of the ball, every single play, are incredible. But I would also like to honor the student part of the student athlete with each of you. Jake, your presence in our community is second to none. On the certificates that I'm giving out tonight, it reads, and I apologize if my back is back to you, it reads, "Success isn't about what you accomplish, but what you inspire others to do." Jake, you have certainly inspired the next generation of Tuskers. Matthew, you were just honored with the Connett Award, the highest accomplishment for any athlete in Section 1. And Nick, I have witnessed your leadership ability and your character as a member of our student athletic council dating back to when we went to Nebraska as part of the Human Performance Project in May. When I get emails, and I want to read a couple, this is what makes me proud as an athletic director, of your leadership as captains for our state-winning football team. One community member reached out and emailed and said, "During our New York State Championship game, the broadcasters pointed out our sportsmanship numerous times, that you won, but you won with class, always helping the opposition up and offering a hand." From the chairperson of Section 1, who emailed Dr. Blanch, Mr. Bay, and myself in late September, after running into our boys at a big football game, not our football game, another two schools, their game, "They were respectful, sweet, and full of positive energy." And then the section chair, Ms. Delay from Rye High School, went on to thank Coach D and myself for leaving her with a big smile and realizing what a wonderful sports community we have here in Somers. But for me, it was a little one, and I just want to tell you, we left the hotel Sunday morning, these boys going to play the biggest game of their lives, right? You're revved up, charged up, ready to go, and I see them out the door, they get on the buses, and I come back in the hotel, and I see the general manager of all the hotels up in that Syracuse area and the manager of the hotel, and they look at me, and they said, "Mark, never in our years of doing this have we seen a football team handle themselves as well as your kids did and leave our hotel as neat as they did." And let me tell you, that made me, standing there watching you take that, hoist that trophy up, that made me equally as proud. You're great leaders and great gentlemen, and we're lucky to have you here as student athletes. Coach DiMatteo, I'm going to keep it short. I want to thank you for being here. I know it's been a long season. You've done a lot. I'd like to encourage everybody in here tonight. Coach had a post-game interview on the NISFA website, it's on their Twitter feed, where Coach, for one minute and eight seconds, talked about the value of community, that he lives in this community, and how bringing that New York State Championship home to him meant everything. Coach, it was touching to watch and to watch you lead our men. Congratulations and congratulations on such a great season. So to our New York State football champions, to Coach DiMatteo, please come up here and accept the certificate. They clean up pretty well amazingly, but... With that being said, thank you. I know I spoke a lot, but I think deservingly so for the young men and women here. So thank you for your time and look forward to seeing you around the community. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Mr. Haddam. And if it's okay, Board, if we just take a break like we usually do and just go say hi to student athletes, and then we'll let them off on their way. So we'll just take a quick break, Paul. So it looks like we're back on. So thank you again, Board, for taking your time out there, letting us say a few words to some of our student athletes and things like that. So thank you once again for allowing us some time, the fall, winter, and spring Board meetings, to take a moment for this recognition. So we're going ahead and look at our next piece on the agenda. So how are we doing, Claire? Looks like it's starting to come up. Thank you very much. So, look at that. That's a little nerve-wracking, is that man up there? But that's okay. Thanks, man. So tonight, we have the kind of report on the preliminary budget that Chris and I will walk through here a little bit, but again, this is just a high-level look at our major areas as we walk through this area. So I'll just go ahead to the next screen, and you can see just budget development, some of the driving factors, the budget history that we've seen over the number of years in the district, our reserves, fund balance, tax surchargeary matter, which obviously we've been talking about quite a bit over the last couple of years, debt service, and then some of the capital reserve fund, and the planned usage we have that we spoke at the last Board meeting at pretty good length about that. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Chris to start walking us through some of the budget development stuff.
Sure. And just to start off here, budget development process, to ensure the continuing excellence in all academic and extracurricular programs while developing a fiscally responsible budget that stays within the tax levy cap. So we kind of go with these developing guiding principles, try to align the budget decisions with the strategic vision, forward and excellent, educate the whole child, and one of the main factors we consider when going through the budget is the degree of impact on students and the number of students that are impacted. We take input from stakeholders, such as the Board of Education, PTA Council, we have a Citizens Finance Committee, Building Administration, and others throughout the district during the budget development process. Step three, some of the larger budget variables each year is the tax levy cap, what that number will be, the use of fund balance or other reserves to help balance the budget. Then expenditure increases, especially this year with the inflation that everyone is seeing, there's certain expenditures that are just increasing more than you'd like. And then on the revenue side, we have state aid and building aid. Just going over the quick calendar of events, budget discussions have been happening now for the past few months. This is our initial kind of high-level overview of the budget, and then throughout now, in March, we will be presenting various aspects of the budget to the Board and the community, and then all leading to an April Board adoption of the budget. And then the final step would be the budget vote in May of this year for the budget vote and the trustee election. So for the 2023-2024 annual budget, it is, must be a balanced budget each year. So on the left side here, we have the larger revenue streams for the district. Property taxes is the biggest revenue stream, followed by state aid, Westchester County sales tax, and then there's other miscellaneous revenues that make up the rest. Then on the expenditure side, largest portion that we've talked about many times is salary and benefits. You also have transportation, debt service. This year especially, the cost of utilities has gone up more than anyone would like, and then there's obviously many other expenditures that go into the budget. So some of the larger driving factors for the revenue side, in the tax levy cap calculation, it's capped at 2% of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, or lower. Currently, it's trending around 6%. Last year, it was 4.7%. So for the tax cap calculation purposes, we'll be using a 2% number in that tax cap calculation. Again, that does not mean that the tax cap limit or maximum levy that we can issue would be 2%. There's also additional exclusions that go into that calculation, and right now, anticipating the maximum levy without seeking a supermajority would be around 2.75% to about 3.5%. We won't have those numbers finalized for a couple of months as we get additional state aid numbers and building aid numbers that come out later in January.
What types of things are the exclusions?
So state aid, building aid that you get comes off the debt service payments that you make. So any kind of debt service, interfund transfers, those are part of the exclusions, so for the debt service, and then any building aid that you get for those would come off of that. There's also exclusions for the retirement system if it went up more than 2% or 2 percentage points. This year, it's not, so that will not be part of that, and it hasn't been the last couple of years. Another big driving, another big revenue stream for us is state aid. So the last couple of years, the state has began to fulfill the foundation aid that the districts are owed. Years ago, I want to say maybe 15 years ago, there was a reduction in foundation aid for districts. It was like a gap elimination adjustment, they called it, and ever since then, the district hasn't been receiving its full foundation aid. It might have been last year or two years ago that the state has now agreed to phase in districts and bring them up to their full foundation aid. So that's why we're seeing that increase in foundation aid, you know, somewhere between $1.3 and $1.5 million. We saw that last year. We're going to see it again next year, and then we'll be fully phased in. It did come at a very good time for Somers because we're also having a decrease in our building aid because one of our older bonds, the 2008 timeframe, those bonds are coming off of the building aid projections. So that increase in state aid, we're looking at $700,000 to $800,000. Again, we won't have those preliminary numbers until January, the very end of January, when the first governor's budget comes out. Sales tax, we've been seeing an increase over the last year or so in Westchester County, so we will anticipate seeing about a $200,000 to $300,000 increase in that. And then appropriated fund balance, which is currently at just over $500,000, we're projecting again somewhere in the range of $400,000 to $600,000. Again, this is to kind of help balance the budget. Typically, we don't have to go into this fund balance at the end of the year. There's usually a few dollars, you know, that's left over, and we never have to actually go into our fund balance, and usually we do have some money left over that we can then fund our reserves with. Moving on to some of the larger driving factors for expenses, we have the New York State Teachers Retirement System, so that is for all certified staff, teachers, administrators, teaching assistants. That rate currently is at 10.29%, and we've gotten that range from them, that it's going to be going down actually to 9.5% to 10%. Even a small decrease like that does certainly help the budget. New York State Employees Retirement System, we're looking at a potential increase from 11.6% to 13.1%. If you recall, last year, it dropped from, I want to say, 16.1% down to 11.6, so it was a big swing last year, and now you see a little bit of an uptick. So with these budget presentations, they are good for a moment in time. So this anticipated health insurance rate increases that I have on here, for calendar, so the empire plan is for the staff, the teachers, and that is on a calendar year basis. So for 2023, we had in here about a 6% to 7% increase. We have since found out some new numbers, and unfortunately, that is going to be upwards somewhere around 15%,
Oh, my goodness.
which is a significant hit for the budget. And that'll obviously then, we're going to have to probably adjust our 2024 projection as well if we're going to be seeing numbers like that. So it's...
15%? And then you expect another increase on top of that for 2024?
2024. We're going to have, we will project something. We might, we'll take a look at it and see, the 6% and 7% might just be light, so we might have to adjust that. But for 2023, we know that that is going up.
Got it. And again, just for clarity, the empire plan is something that we're required to offer from the state?
Yeah, and it's part of the teachers' union contract that is negotiated with the union.
But it's not something we select or anything like that as a district?
Correct. And so that's where, where Chris was saying, so this January, that's where it covers half of this year's dollars. So there was an estimate last year, it was not 15%.
Oh, so 15% for this year, so they're going to go back, collect for the entire year, 15% of that?
It's going to impact this current 22-23 budget as well because we didn't project 15%.
Starting in January.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
So I'm going to, so we have to use the, like, I don't know if we have to use the empire plan, or it's, that's what's contractually agreed upon, and it would have to be renegotiated to change?
Correct.
But I would imagine others, our other plans are going up also?
They are. And I mean, just from the PNW Health Benefits Consortium Plan that everyone outside of the teachers' union that belongs to, that plan is projected to go up 5% to 7%. We'll have those numbers hopefully finalized next week. We have another meeting. But yeah, each plan is different, but yes, if we were to look to change that, that would be something that would need to be negotiated with the union.
Okay.
At contract renegotiation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's why I'd say with that big an increase, I guess, would you be looking at a cost comparison to see if that was something you needed to pursue?
So just as far as the negotiate, we always would look at those pieces, so they're actually getting closer and closer because before this, the empire plan was actually a little bit low. Last year was, I think it was almost...
Empire...
Yeah, it was almost zero.
If it wasn't last year, yeah.
It was very small.
It was low.
The PNW number went up those four years, so those costs between those two overall programs are, actually, that gap is, we're seeing has been narrowing over the last six or seven years. So it's a piece, and again, that is a pretty, not pretty significant, it's an enormous thing to try to say that that would come out of any negotiated contract for that plan.
Right, okay.
And that's been in the district for decades.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one of the other large uncertainties for expenses is utilities. I'm sure everyone has seen their utility bills, whether it's oil or electric. Again, oil prices, again, at the time of creating this presentation, was about $4.90 per gallon, and last year at this time, it was $2.61 per gallon, and we used somewhere in the neighborhood of about 250,000 gallons of oil last year. So with our energy performance contract, we should be using less this year. Heating season kind of is just kicking into gears, so we haven't really seen those numbers just yet, but as we move forward in this budget development process...
You're back up.
Okay. We'll hopefully get some better numbers as far as the amount of oil that we're using and how much we're going to budget for, but just seeing the price differences is alarming.
Yeah.
And then again, with electricity as well, last year, the supply rate was only about $5.01, and now we're up to just under $0.13. Again, another significant increase, but again, the energy performance contract should help offset some of those additional costs that we're going to be seeing. We're just not going to be seeing dollar-for-dollar savings that you'd see in the, like, the budget still might go up, where before these large increases in rates, we would have expected for the budget to go down. But we're still going to be avoiding those additional costs because of the energy performance contract that we did. We'll be consuming less oil, we'll be using less electric, which will certainly help. This slide is just a five-year history of the past budgets in Somers. You'll see last year, budget-to-budget change was about 3.59%, and the tax rate increase was about 2.66%. And you see this past year, the assessments you see went down just over $3 million in assessments. Part of that reason is because of the tax surchargeary that was settled. So without that tax surchargeary, the, well, even with that tax surchargeary, with the 2.66% increase, that meant about $27 per month per household with an averaged assessed value of $70,000. If that tax surchargeary was never settled and the assessment stayed higher, it would have reduced that 27 down to about 15 or so per month per household. But because the tax surchargeary was settled, that money now gets kind of dispersed throughout the rest of the community.
I appreciate, Chris, just one more time on that one, too, that the coffers in the district receive no more dollars, it's just it's coming from different taxpayers, and so it's doubling basically the cost of what would have been done without those tax surchargeary matters. So it's a large, significant one, and we know that there's another large portion waiting out there ahead for... waiting out there ahead for us again in the coming year. So just to let you know again, that, and the community know that those, the end-all revenue is the same, it's just who's ended up contributing to the funding stream in that area. So when we look at that next piece, this is where Chris will talk to us through that four-year reserve and fund balance. This is a piece that I also want to highlight here, and I'll kick it back over to Chris, but the tax reserve fund that the board has been able to establish and maintain the last number of years allowed us to avoid even more of an increase by not bonding for that payment. We paid for that out of our tax reserves reserve. We plan on making a second payment coming up here in July 1, too. So again, it's not a double whammy, it's like, oh, we now need to bond those multiple millions of dollars, and we need to do the other. It's, it's, it's not both, at least it's the one, so thanks, Chris.
Right, because that was money we had to pay for the years that they had contested while it was being settled.
Yep.
Okay, and so, so the $27 per, per month per household average increase is not our budget going up, it's a matter of the tax money being spread throughout the community for the property that had it lowered?
Right.
Exactly.
So looking at this four-year reserve and fund balance analysis, just in total, you see at the end of June 30th, 2022, it was just over 20 million. Going back the last couple of years, it was just under 16, and then around 13. Again, the lar, the large difference in the last couple of years was this tax surchiari reserve, because we knew that that, these tax surchiaries are going to be coming due. So we were able to get that up to about 8.2 million at the end of last year, of which we, you'll see on the next slide that we've made a partial payment already for that one that was settled, and then we'll make another one in the next fiscal year, next July. And then the other large increase was in the Capital Reserve Fund that the voters established last May, up to $10 million, and we had just under 4.5 million put into that last year. That was in a combination from surplus funds at the end of the year and from our ERS Reserve, our New York State Employees Retirement Reserve. You see in June 30th of 2020, that top line, our ERS Reserve went up to about 3.2 million. That was when we had some funds during COVID, and some funds kind of, because of the shutdown, we, we had some significant savings on certain transportation costs and utility costs, so we put it in our ERS Reserve, and then last year, we transferred those money to the Capital Reserve and reduced that ERS Reserve back down to where it kind of was back in that June 30th, 2019 number.
Chris, could I go back to a previous slide, a question? I was thinking, when you review all the five years, are all these five years, the raise is limited by the CPI or, or by the 2%?
So dollars raised?
Because your, your heading says dollar raised via CPI or dollar change in tax levy.
So this is really, so I could probably change that, it's, it's the dollars changed, dollars raised via the tax levy.
Right.
That's the increase.
Since we never really have to use CPI, right? For the other, for these five years?
The CPI is included in the tax cap calculation.
No, I'm talking about a 2% versus a CPI that is higher or lower than 2%. So I think to be more clear, you probably could indicate which year that is applied under the 2% rule and which years are not. In this case, I think all five years are 2% rule, right?
So one of the things I know we do want to bring forward at our next piece is a little bit of detail in there, for example, over a couple of those years, whilst the board could have gotten to a certain amount of revenue they raised, we went below that.
Exactly.
So those are the some pieces we'll bring forward.
More info for people to know that the effort we try to emphasize is, is try to work under.
Yes. So we'll bring that forward in future months, yep.
Yeah, yeah, we'll bring that forward and when we get, dive a little deeper into the revenues for the district.
Another question, I think last year we talked about it a bit, is I think you will show that eventually in the pie charts of how the money is, is spent and so on. I think last year, we discussed, probably just a reminder with this here, one, is to distinguish the money that is spent in instruction or educational sectors, okay? I know the other expenses are much overwhelming, but still, in a smaller portion of, of the instructional expense, we want to get a little more info, see what our, you know, district is, is spending and how we really are doing.
Yeah, I would just remind the board today, it's a real high-level introductory piece that we dive down into.
Right, right, but I remember last year's questions were asked, so we could put that little one segment, say whatever, 15% down a little bit more, you know, divisions in how is spend, particularly comparing to year before, that is a history. I think would be information that the community or the parents are interested to know.
Yeah, and again, I'll look at it again, I would just say that historically has been in the budget every year, it's a year-over-year expenditure, year-over-year budget, and budget to actual, so it, it's all laid out there in the, certainly in our presentation, as well as in the overall budget document. It's, it's there to some pretty strong detail, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks, Chris.
We'll look forward to it.
Then just quickly, tax surchiari reserve, as I mentioned, we had that one tax surchiari that was settled. We did make a payment this year for just under 2.5 million. We'll make the last million-dollar payment in the next fiscal year. So what we currently have available in the tax surchiari reserve is about 4.6 million. Currently outstanding, we have just over $16 million worth of claims pending. And again, it's, it's, there's one larger tax surchiari that is sitting out there that represents over 70% of the potential liability. We continue to monitor that, we continue to work with the town, and they keep us informed all along the way as they're going through the process of speaking with the plaintiffs, you know, in determining whether or not we're going to settle on a, on a number, again, hopefully in the next few months. But we're kind of, we do rely on the town for that, because they're the ones that are negotiating that. But they, they bring us in to that, knowing that it's a large portion coming from the district.
And just to be clear, Chris, the 60 million is, is what the maximum of everyone's asking for, not necessarily what they're going to get when all of this pans out.
That is correct, yes.
I just want to make sure that people understand that it's not $60 million waiting out there for us to have to reimburse people for.
Then this slide is just going over some of our debt service that we have currently, and then for the next few years. I mentioned, so there's the 2006, 2009 bond project, which will go out for the next four or five years. That, again, we'll be talking about at a, at a later date, about the next future bond project, that'll be coming online. So when that debt comes off, we'll put, put another project on. We also have our 13.6 million dollar project, that was a few years ago, 10.7 million dollar safety and security project, and now our energy performance contract that is coming online as well. We try to maintain a level debt throughout the years, so there's not big fluctuations. And again, these numbers do go into the tax cap calculations, that's why we try to maintain These last couple slides talk about the separate proposition that's going to be on the ballot, and again, as I stated earlier, last May, the voters approved Capital Reserve Fund for up to $10 million. We, we got about $4.5 million in there. We're going to look to transfer some additional funds in the next couple of months to bring that up to somewhere between 6 and, 6 and 6.5 million dollars, and then ask the voters to vote on accessing those funds this May. So the voters had to establish, had to vote to establish the funds, and now the voters have to vote on whether we can use those funds for said purposes. And those purposes are on this slide. The majority of it is going to be looking at upgrading some athletic facilities. One is the tennis courts, looking at putting in six new tennis courts at the high school at the lower field. And again, as you all know, there's, there's no high, no tennis courts currently on the high school campus. Softball and baseball, we're looking to turf the entire field, and then there's other various upgrades that go along with that as well. And then this last bullet on here talks about some building renovations at the high school and primrose, and the main reason for that is we're going to have to do some smaller, very small projects inside the building in order to be aided on the work that we're doing outside of the building. So the athletic fields and the tennis courts. So in order to get aid on those projects, we need to do some work inside the building as well, which we will come up with, you know, a pretty small project at each one of the buildings, so we ensure we're getting the full aid that we should.
And we'll talk more in detail about this before the budget vote, right?
Absolutely. And then this last slide is just talking about the upcoming Board of Ed meeting dates and budget topics. Our, our next one will be in January 17th, and that'll be on the non-instructional budget. Then the following month, in February, it'll be on the instructional budget, and then we'll kind of bring it all together in March for a summary presentation. And then April 18th is when we'll, again, have another budget summary, and then budget adoption by the board. May 2nd will be the public budget hearing, and then May 16th is the budget vote and trustee election. And that is it for tonight's presentation.
Thank you. See if Matt's up there and get our lights or anything. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. So again, I know that this first one at the beginning of the year is, you know, we want more information, but we, we need to start somewhere, so that's why there's, there's ranges in there and things, and so when we come back in January, we'll definitely have some of those numbers or start falling in place, and so that's where we'll be looking at exactly what that looks like for reserve accounts and such like that, so. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Andy.
Okay. Next thing is our committee and liaison reports. So if any of, anybody has had a committee meeting, I know, Ife, did you want to say anything about policy committee met this week?
Yeah.
I know we'll review a couple of policies.
Pretty straightforward meeting, that a couple of policies are updates. The only one that is still under review is probably the, they called purchase, I call it just purchase item policy, right? Is it, is it about purchasing? Anyway, something to do with approval range of expenses for bidding. The language really is pretty straightforward, it's just that the importance of increasing the amount allowed from, for example, 5,000 to 10,000, was it? One of the examples? So it is just to give administration a little more leeway in determining smaller amounts of expenses. So that part probably, we, we're just going straightforward. The second one is the one that are concerning, I think, conference reimbursement. This reimbursement or the conference expense report, it's tedious, I know. Every, every accounting department probably doesn't enjoy that kind of work, when you get somebody's travel report comes back for three, four days, the meals and the conference fees, parkings, and you know, sometimes even gasoline, so on. It, it's kind of tedious work. So that's why the per deem idea was introduced. I think the government used it, the military used it, and so on. We have a per deem number of $50 that for going to conferences for meals, I think, was in 2015, was it? Right? Was 2015, so we now want to update that. I think the administration did propose a number. I think that number certainly should be increased, as you know, the inflation and people do spend more on food. However, it is also an item that philosophically, one need to look at it, it's, it's really, sometimes I call it attitude issue. The meals can be really, you know, very sort of flexible latitude you, you really spend. You can have $100 meal per meal, you can have $10 per meal, and you have, people have different habits, some people don't take breakfast, some people, you know, have huge breakfasts and so on, they don't want the hotel giving free breakfast, so on. So these all involved in there, so one number per deem to cover that is, is difficult. So when we try to raise it, I think this time, the number I see is, is raised to 65. It doesn't really sound too much, but on the other hand, it's 30% of the 50, $50. So I just want the board, everybody, to mull over this a little bit, thinking about it, whether we can do this over, you know, three years' time, or somehow thinking about the inflation picture that is coming on. Another thing is whether we really should put in language to, to sort of stress the attitude issue about going to conferences for the benefits of our, you know, staff, teachers, so on, to better ourselves, to help our school, help the students, so on. And sometimes it's different from a, a vocational type of a meal and so on. And also, sometimes I know, this personal experience, you know, when you have a conference, you go to these meals together and so on, there are bonds to, some people love to drink and start drinking, and at the end, sort of make the bill to be evenly divided. Personally, I hate that, because I don't drink, but.
So we're going to get these policies for review.
Okay, I, I want to, I want to get to you to think about it, okay?
So that, yeah, that will get all get reviewed on the board.
And we don't, we don't reimburse anybody for any alcohol that is consumed.
That's true.
Can we do that at the board meetings, though, or no?
No, 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 I, I think public probably should know also, I mean, when we approve some numbers, we, we do have our, you know, reasoning process.
So considerations, when we have the first read, these are some of the things, factors that you were talking about.
Yeah.
All right. Social, emotional wellness, did you have an update?
I did, actually. We, last time we were here, I forgot to mention that they had the wellness, we had the wellness seminar, or I think it was right before, I don't remember now, but we went over the co-vitality results, it was a well-attended event, and I, I was so happy, I, I attended as well. I thought it was well-attended, and I think parents got a lot out of it. And we also met as a committee last week discussing next steps, and I thought, actually, Dr. Blanch made an interesting point of how we're one of the only school districts who really surveyed the kids to hear from how they feel, how they're feeling and what their stressors are in their lives. And I just wanted to, I thought it really brought back to how we, as a school district, continue to find opportunities to elevate that student voice and in the learning process, and I just wanted to take, and like, a moment to acknowledge that it's good to see that kind of happening in the school, and we also went around the room, and I thought this was a great moment of just discussing why we were there and why we felt it was important to have this work in our school districts, and we all, it was interesting, because pretty much everyone said the same thing of how important it was to have the social, emotional wellness piece to, and how many people were invested in the work, and recognizing how without that, students being mentally prepared to come into school every day, it's really a foundation, and they can't access the curriculum without being mentally ready and prepared for, for their life. So it was great to see all of that, and progress is going forward, so.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. And citizens' finance, was there an update?
No.
No, we're good. Okay. Any, anybody else liaisons or committees that I'm not?
Just the, the planning committee, we met today, we're just planning the, the board retreat for next week, and we'll talk about the, excuse me, we'll talk about the district goals.
Okay. All right, great, thank you. Okay, next is financial reports. We are in acceptance of the warrant report, statement of revenues, Treasury Treasurer's report, and budget status report. And next is the approval of the meeting minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of minutes of the meetings of November 1st and November 15th, 2022, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. And then we come to board action, the personnel consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. Next is the CSE/CPSE meeting recommendations. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of recommendations of the meetings as listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay. Next up, policies for first reading.
Business.
No business.
Business.
I skipped over one, sorry. It was on a roll. The business consent agenda. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Is there any discussion, anything you need to point out? I know there was some...
I guess the only, just maybe two things. There's a, a ward of bids for a couple of projects that are going to be happening at Primrose. There's a, a copy room IT closet renovation project and then air handler replacements for the cafeteria and the kitchen. Those will be our last couple of projects that'll be associated with the safety and security bond.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. All right. Now, policies first reading. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somers Central School District does hereby accept the following updated policies for our first reading. 6150 budget transfers and 6660 independent auditor.
So moved.
Second?
Did anybody, because this is just a first read and then we'll be approving them at the next meeting, did anybody have any questions or anything that you wanted to point out from these policies after reading them over? Everybody's okay?
Not with these.
Okay, so.
Is there a reason why this, not like the 25,000 is then the number? Are there typical purchases that actually fall under that?
So with this, I looked at the numbers. I, I don't have them in front of me right now, but there was only a handful that fell between like that 7,500 and 25,000. I think in the last three years, one year it was like three, next year it was like five. And then the ones below 7,500, again, it just kind of helps to speed up the process a little bit, to not have to send the budget transfer over to the superintendent's office. And it may be a 50 dollar transfer that we need to happen, have happen, so.
All right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Okay. And then we had a policy reviewed. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, having done a review of board policies, does hereby accept the following policy to remain as is with no changes required at this time. 6215 senior citizens exemption.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion or questions on this one?
No, just, NISP says it's not, this is not a mandatory policy for us. And we don't set the, we don't actually set the tax rate on this, this.
No, we recommend to the town.
Well, it's a recommend, it's more of a recommendation. We're not actually.
But they accept it. If you recommend it, they accept.
Yeah.
And this was adopted originally in 1993? Yeah. And it's always been 50%?
Yep. Up to 50%. There are discussions on the, the limit, which have recently been adjusted or can be adjusted. So that could be a further discussion, but that wouldn't change, isn't no bearing on this policy per se.
Okay.
Okay. So if everybody's okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained. Okay. And that brings us to public comments. So is there any public comment this evening? Okay. Then we're moving on to board member comments.
I'll just be brief.
I'll close this out.
I'll be, I'll be brief. That's good.
Yeah. I think an opportunity to acknowledge students and their hard work is always appreciated by us. I, I think, I, I know what it means to be a kid. I don't, I can empathize with kids who are in high school who spend six, seven hours a day in classes and then have to go to practice and do their homework. So that alone is no small feat. And then to also do as well as they did academically says a lot. And I think what Mark said about the, the, the character of the kids, I think that speaks again volumes about what we're bringing up in this community. So I just appreciated the moment to acknowledge their hard work and appreciate their awards.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. You know, it is, it's impressive. What's the, what's the staff of the scholar athletes? It's a team with, what, over 75%? Over 90?
Yep. For athletic participation?
Yeah.
We're just short of.
No, for the, the nine, we had the nine teams.
Yep. 75% of kids have to get a 90%.
To get that, to have nine teams in the fall season. I think that, that's impressive at the level of caliber that, you know, these students are performing at. And then I'll use the football team as an example, right? It's, it's, it is the character piece of it, right? So the, the announcers did notice it, you know, on the field when they, when they were playing, right? You're playing a tough game like football, you're hitting each other. These guys played with class and picked up the other team and helped them up. And then the, the hotel saying that and seeing that. I mean, I went to the after, the after when they came back on their buses, right? They came off, said hello to everybody and celebrated, won the victory. And they went back on the bus and cleaned the buses before the buses left, right? But that's teaching them, you know, we talked about the global, you know, being a global citizenship, right? And leadership, right? So, you know, I'll use football as an example, right? Because I'm probably closer to it, but a lot of our programs are doing this. You look at the leaders that are coming out of that. You know, and that's kudos to, you know, the coaches and the administration, you know, that are supporting that, that they're able to perform at that caliber, both athletically and academically. And then also walk out with, you know, high character, leadership skills. And that's a true testament to what the, the school is producing. So, nice job, everyone. Thank you.
I was just going to say, again, congratulations to the football team on the state championship. It's wonderful. And it was wonderful to celebrate the athletes here tonight for all their accomplishments because it's everyone, you got, I mean, just to repeat what you guys said, it's amazing. And also congratulations to the S H S drama production that went on this weekend. And I was excited to hear and see, I'm excited to see and hear about the different activities for inclusive schools week this week that just kicked off yesterday. I know all four schools are participating and I'm really happy to, to see it taking on a role. And the S M S orchestras chorus and chorus are here on Thursday night. And next week is the band concert. So I look forward to those as well.
We had Thanksgiving recently and I, I don't want to jump too far back, but I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving and was able to take a moment and, and really think about everything that we have to be thankful for because it's, it's a lot as, as a community, as a district. If you stop and you think what you're thankful for, I, I think that helps bring everyone together. And that appreciation is, is important. And, and I, I feel it. So thank you, everybody. Student athletes, fantastic being able to celebrate some of those accom, accomplishments, both academically and, and on the field or, or in the pool or wherever your sport takes place. But the dedication that, that goes into that and the passion that goes into that, that's fantastic. And as you said, well, well-rounded people that are developing, that's fantastic. The school play, got to see, which was phenomenal. It was dramatic. The, the set was highly effective. The acting was, we've got some high levels of talent, to say the least. It, it was terrific. It was dramatic. It was a little bit frightening as it was supposed to be. So, so well done. And, and, and that's one thing I'm thankful for the district is that we have a lot of opportunities to capture lots of different interests and lots of different passions. And that's, that's something as a board member, I want to make sure that we, that's something that we can always find a way to keep. One other thing, there is a, at the high school, there is a wind and solar light pole. It's fascinating when I'm sitting there picking up my kids to look at it. Is that, is that part of the?
It was part of the energy performance.
It's part of the energy performance contract.
Yep.
Does that like power multiple, or that, that's like an individual?
Just a standalone, yes.
It looks, it looks pretty cool.
Yeah.
Mesmerizing.
It's mesmerizing. It's a good way to spend 10 minutes with you. Anyway, it was neat. There was something new I saw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want to echo what Checha said about the drama. The Sunday I saw this, it's called Life of the Living Dead. It is the setting, the behind, the actor, actress, the behind scene work is very fantastic. Initially, the misty auditorium is quite impressive, although did make a couple of person cough. I think it's very, very important to encourage this kind of thing and balance with athletic work. As, as you see, we're spending a lot of money. We're going to build new tennis courts and so on. The athlete, the, the artwork, I have a feeling that we do not do enough promotion. Sunday, although it's where it goes show, I don't think the auditorium was filled, not even one third, maybe less. I will really emphasize that whoever does the program, the administration, the, you know, student body involved, pay attention to promotion. I think we should at least invite board members. Every time, personal letter, make sure seven board members all go there. I'm saying loudly because that's the only way to help, to support, okay? Like the Sunday performance, typically we invite our heritage residents, senior citizens to show respect and get them involved. So we have so many seats empty. Why don't we enlarge that list? Maybe even get a school bus to shuttle. I mean, that's how we get people involved to, to really appreciate and also get students really appreciate their work. I mean, it's very hard work to, to, you know, rehearsal and practice and so on. At the end, you know, for a couple of performances, you don't have the full house. You don't have all that, you know, excitement. So that's all I'm going to say. All right?
I bought you three minutes.
The only thing I'll say to that, I think it's an embarrassment of riches. Ife, I think we were lucky to have two big events this weekend.
Yeah.
And there was a competition for where do you attend? So I think it was a good thing that we had the football game.
Hopefully that's the reason is competition.
I suspect. Yes, I suspect.
Oh, and speaking of art, we forgot to, the teachers are presenting.
I was going to do that.
Okay, good.
You stole everything else I was going to say.
I don't want to steal anything.
All right. You guys, you guys sing the line, I know that.
Yeah, I'm not going to duplicate everything everybody said. It was an exciting weekend in Somers. Lots of great things going on. It's great that, you know, with the athletics, because it falls in three seasons, three times throughout the year, we have these recognitions, especially kind of triggered also with this, with the state scholar athlete recognition. So it's great. And throughout the year, you know, we'll have the other things that come up. And in the spring, we get to recognize a whole slew of other accomplishments in our students. So that's great, too. But yes, tonight, talking about so many things going on all at once. Tonight at the library, our art teachers, I think it's the high school art teachers or all the art teachers?
High school.
High school art teachers are opening an exhibit. They are the featured artists at the library. So I think it's there all month. So hopefully, you know, we can't be there for opening night because we're here. But I'm definitely planning on going over to the library to check out their artwork. And I hope that everybody is able to go and see what our talented staff have there. A little preview before we get the whole district-wide art show in the spring, so.
And I'm just going to react to your conversation this evening. So the reality is what you saw tonight, what you've spoken about, the stories you've shared and all these. This doesn't show up in a report that you're going to see on a state website. It's not going to show you the numbers here. There, it's the reality, though, of what the kids are experiencing all the time. The reality of opportunity and choice, elevating students' voices across the school district, opportunities across the range, from the arts area to the athletic area, to the engineering area, to whatever it may be. There's, we right now are currently the number one choices of AP and IB courses offered in Westchester County. We're looking to add a new course next year, actually underneath Mr. Bear's direction there with literature and performance. We can get some students who are interested in some of the performance we talked about. And they can also get international baccalaureate credit for that. So the reality of that, it doesn't show up on a spreadsheet and things like that. But the richness that the school has to offer to the children, I would say is really second to none. And lots of choice involved inside of that. And so when you hear things like tonight, like Mark had shared, I got a lovely email the other day from our new bowling coach. And that coach had shared that we have not had bowling before. As you recall, the board supported, bring that online this year. We have about nine students who are involved in the bowling this year to start. You don't need a lot of students for the bowling team. You got about nine students are involved there. What we're seeing so far is exactly what we had hoped for. Students who are typically maybe not involved in the athletic program, coming together as a team, supporting each other team. And guess what? The parents are showing up to see their kids bowl and have relationships with their families now that weren't there existing before. That again, doesn't show up in, you know, some spreadsheet or something like that. We obviously always want to get better at our academics and things and our performance, those. We spend time looking at that. You know, we'll be looking at that again in February and things. So, but the reality is there, there's a lot to see here. A lot of pursuit of continuing to improve our works. And again, thank you to the board and community for providing wonderful facilities for these things to happen. They don't just, they have to have. You have to have nice art rooms. We have to have good facilities. We have to have good band rooms. We have to have nice auditoriums and things like that to have, have this take place. So again, I, I certainly understand the value of looking at sometimes numbers, but sometimes racking and stacking also doesn't show the overall picture of what a, a school district can offer in that regard. But I appreciate us hearing you all speak about tonight. It's hitting home. So, so thank you very much, board. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing else.
Oh, it's eight o'clock.
All right. Be it resolved that this regular meeting of the Board of Education be adjourned.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.